Okie doke, are we ready to go? We got everyone here?
I believe I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Okay, then I will call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting to be held here on Wednesday, April 14th, 2021. It is five o'clock exactly. This meeting will be held via teleconference only in order to reduce the risk of spreading COVID-19. All votes taken during this teleconference meeting will be by roll call vote and the vote will be publicly reported. No physical location from which members of the public may observe the meeting. There are no physical locations for which members of the public may observe the meeting and offer and offer public comment. The meeting will be livestreamed at malibu city.org/video and malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Members of the public are encouraged to submit email correspondence to citycouncil@malibu city.org before the meeting begins. Members of the public may also speak during the meeting though using the Zoom application. You must first sign up to speak before the item you would like to speak on has been called by the mayor and then you must be present in the Zoom conference to be recognized. Please visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting and follow the directions for signing up to speak and to download the Zoom application if needed. Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Here.
Councilmember Euring.
Here.
Mayor Pratim Gristanti.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we have roll call on that please?
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Euring.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Gristanti.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I ever report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 13th, 2020.
Thank you very much. And as we go to item 1A, we have a hard stop of 5:40 because it takes 20 minute turnaround for them to get ready for the six o'clock meeting. So item 1A, City Response to the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District's April 9th, 2021 letter. And I am going to turn the microphone over to Christine Wood at this time.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Pearson. Thank you for thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today about the the counter offer that we received from the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. As you guys know, we submitted a best and final. I don't know how final it is since we're talking about our counter proposal, but we submitted a best. We submitted a very favorable offer to the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District in early March and asked them to respond by the end of, at the beginning of April. It took a little bit longer. In fact, they had not even, after about 30 days, hadn't even shared it with their board. They eventually had a board meeting and discussed it and the result of that was the counter offer that they sent us on April 9th. In that offer, it was, it was unique in the sense that it finally admitted that there should be a separate Malibu Unified School District. It was one of the first times we've gotten them to acknowledge and admit that. But the financial offer was no different than any of the other offers that we saw during our negotiations. Again, it was a request for a percentage of your your assessed value and a portion of your property taxes in perpetuity, which was not something the ad hoc committee or the council had really been open to previously. So based on the October action of the council, there, I'm sorry, there was also an ask in that offer for, for us to withdraw our petition to Laco. As you know, we're, we have a preliminary public hearing on Saturday and they wanted us to withdraw our petition in order to have Laco evaluate our individual financial proposals. And so based on the council's action in October that we will pursue our Laco petition, we felt comfortable denying that aspect of the counter offer, but we're interested in the possibility of having a third party look at our financial proposals. At this point, since there seems to be so much of a commitment to an independent Malibu Unified School District, we're, we're almost there. The issue is about this fair and equitable split. And so we thought it would be in everyone's best interest to have a third party take a look at these numbers and to assess what would be fair and equitable. It's not just any third party that we would agree to. And, and that's the action that's before you. We understand and the, the offer we got from the district represented that we would have Laco as a third party look at these numbers and Laco has, has contracted with a consultant, School Services of California, who we're familiar with, School Services has done, has done two reports specifically on the Malibu Unified issue. One of the reports we fully agree with. And so we felt very comfortable deferring to findings of Laco and School Services. And we're asking the council now to consider whether or not it would be willing to ratify a counter proposal to them that says we're going to go to the April 17th preliminary hearing, yes, but we will, if you go with us, we will agree to and be bound by any type of a financial settlement that's offered by Laco through School Services. So that, that's what the staff report says. That's what our letter to the district yesterday said. And we're bringing it to the council today for your consideration before we are bound to any agreement with the district.
Thank you, Christine. That is, that idea took me some time to get used to. I will admit that. The first time I heard it, I was uncomfortable with it. But the more I thought about it, it really seems like the only way to go. And, and if Santa Monica doesn't agree to this, that tells us even more than we already know about them.
Yeah, I, I would add, I, from what I've seen here, I mean, my contribution is relatively recent. I mean, I think the thing I really bring to the table is two things. Number one, I actually went to all these schools and have experienced them all. And so has my family. But also I don't, I come in without the huge history of people like Karen that have worked so hard on this and so many people have, and I can just sort of be in the moment and see it. We have a fantastic team. I fully back their financial analysis. And there's really two main issues left. There's the financial issue, which is the real issue, and they're trying to sort of close it around a racial inequity issue. Both issues are very poor decisions for them to go after because they don't have the facts on their side. So I absolutely back having this independent group that we know is fair and knows how to analyze finances. Let them, let them, let them decide what's fair and equitable because the offer we made is very fair and equitable for everybody. And all kids win on both sides, Santa Monica and Malibu. So I'm, I'm fully in support of it as well, and I really appreciate the incredible hard work of the, of the team. Paul, Bruce, Steve, questions, comments? Bruce?
So first of all, just get to the bottom line, which is I support what you're all proposing. And I, great job. I'm, I'm really glad you're all doing this. It seems to me very obvious that unless this gets decided by a third party, it's never going to get negotiated and agreed on. So that's, that's great. Go for it. I, I'm a little, just a tiny bit troubled. Two things. One is having this kind of a discussion in a non-closed meeting because this is quite, this is, this is kind of like a litigation strategy. So I'm a little hamstrung in what I can feel comfortable saying about what we're proposing. And I, I wonder going forward whether we can have these kinds of conversations if we're going to have them in closed session. The, the other thing I'd say is, you know, it's a little awkward to be asked for our consent after it's already occurred. So, you know, I do support this. There's some tweaks I would have suggested, but since it's already been done, they're not worth it. I'll just throw two caution notes up. One is some people had discussed with me, not council members, before this letter went out, what was kind of being debated. And I understood it was being debated to let Laco make this decision. The letter does say, "and/or the consultant." Consultant obviously isn't, is a contract party. It's not the entity. So the "and/or" is a little troubling to me. Maybe as this gets finalized, if it gets finalized, we can nail that down. The other thing that, you know, leaving yourself at the discretion of a political body is always dangerous, but I guess both sides are, are going to take that danger if we go forward with this, if, if Santa Monica agrees to it. But the other thing I'd say is I agree with the requirement that there be no ex parte communications. I'm concerned about how that gets enforced. I think it'll be honored in the breach more than it'll be honored as, as such. So I would hope that as this is finalized, if it's finalized, we'd actually have a signed arbitration slash mediation agreement that would prohibit the parties from having those conversations and which, and in which the deciderer, you know, whether it's Laco or their, or their consultant or both, also binds itself not to have those kinds of communications. Still no guarantee they won't occur, but I, I think that will button it up a little better. So, but again, you know, good job. I, I support everything you're doing. I didn't think we needed to have this meeting. I thought the ad hoc committee had the authority to kind of make this kind of decision. So go for it.
I will say thank you, Councilmember Silverstein. And we, I, I think all of your questions and comments and concerns are incredibly valid on the money and something we will, we will look into, especially the, the agreement about how to enforce ex parte communications. I think that's, you know, that, that's really a gray area. I will just try and explain if I could, not that it was excuse it, but one of the things we wanted to do is be able to have this, some type of an agreement with the district in place prior to the preliminary hearing. And we wanted to give the district as much opportunity as possible to also have a meeting with their legislative body before the preliminary hearing, which is why we tried to give them notice of what we were thinking and letting them know it was pending ratification by our, our council. And so that, that's why the letter went out yesterday. So it absolutely is still pending your ratification. If you aren't happy with the direction and it's voted down, we will, we will pull away from that counter offer for sure. I mean, this is something, this isn't pro forma. We absolutely want the full commitment of the council. And, and I, you know, I, I appreciate your, your commitment to it despite its procedural challenges. But we, it's not pro forma by any stretch.
Um, Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with Bruce that the only way this is ever going to get done is if the politicians are not part of the decision-making process. The, the people who are on the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board obviously have just wanted this decision to go away. And I, I appreciate how the brilliance of having the decision made for them. And I look forward to voting for this. Thank you.
Mayor, just for the record, if you don't mind asking if there are any public speakers, I don't believe there are, but I did want to just for the record, make sure we do that.
That's good. Yeah. Malibu Screen's the only one. I don't know what that is. So are there any public speakers, Kelsey?
I did want to state just for anyone who might else be watching the livestream, no, we don't have any public speakers signed up for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Steve?
Yeah, just two questions. One, and, and you may not have an answer for this. Is there a timeframe that you anticipate we will get a response from Laco regarding what their decision is? I mean, it's really, it may be too early to even think about that, but I'm just, is there any thought process you guys have got on that one?
So it, it depends on, am I muted?
No, you're good.
It depends, Councilmember Euring, on the decision you're, you're referencing, right? So if it's the decision of the Saturday preliminary hearing, if, if it's that decision, we very well may not have an, an answer to a tentative recommendation about the petition until June. We anticipate that they're going to continue Saturday's preliminary hearing, take some additional testimony at another time, a date to be determined in June, and then possibly at that meeting, they will make a decision about the tentative recommendation. If you mean about the matter before you. Okay. As it relates to the matter before you, this wasn't really something we presented to Laco yet. So again, because, you know, all the bodies have to agree to it. So there's no decision before Laco.
That's okay. Second, you know, the, the meeting on the 17th, if that was going to go forward, that was our only path. As I understood it, they were, you know, after we had the meeting, there were going to be meetings in Santa Monica with residents there and meetings in Malibu, potentially a vote at some point in time. And I never understood who was going to vote, whether it was a Malibu vote or a Santa Monica vote. Okay, but that was, there was some, some process that was going to take place. If, if we go this route with the Laco deciding what the financial, do all of those steps go away? Are those steps still there? Do we know?
Yeah, those steps do not necessarily go away. What goes away is the, the fact that it's no longer a opposed petition, an objected to petition. And so it, it minimizes some of the, you know, you've heard me often talk about this could be five years or 40 years. This puts us a lot more on the five-year track than the 40-year track. It just minimizes a lot of the unknowns and the, the potential conflict. We will still need to potentially do a sequel study. We will still need to do the preliminary, the public lines in the different jurisdictions.
Okay.
All of that will still need to happen.
Okay, gotcha. Your dog's not happy.
Who let the dogs out? Bruce?
Boo boo. So ju- just to state what may be the obvious, but I think it's helpful for the public to understand too. I mean, committing to go down a track of having it resolved by a third party, if it's agreeable, doesn't foreclose us from negotiating something at any point along the way. So this gives us the best of both worlds. Yeah.
It's very true.
And just, I mean, who is, one last question, Mikey, who, you know, th- there are some conditions in this thing. One that says that both parties agree that they will abide by whatever Laco's financial analysis is. Are we going to get a green, or not me, I'm not, is somebody going to get agreements to those things in writing to say, yes, that's what everybody agrees to? How, how do you enforce that stuff?
Christine?
Yeah, that's what I was saying before, Steve, is that we'll need to get some form of a mediation slash arbitration.
Right, I'm just, I'm just wanting, we don't have to define, who's responsible for getting that stuff? I guess is, is the more important question. Is it the ad hoc committee? Is it, who's, who's going to sign off and say, yep, we got this thing wired?
If, so I think, oh, I'm sorry, at some point, if the, if the council proceeds to, to this action, we will, we can draft up an agreement that identifies and spells out the terms that are loosely delineated in the, in the action that, that you'll be voting on. And at that point, it, you know, will be a, an agreement between us and the district. And we will, we, I think one of the, that, that concerning aspects of this, and one of the reasons why we've we feel a little bit anxious about it is that it, it doesn't feel like the district in previous situations, the previous times we've had brokered deals like this, they, they've not necessarily honored it. So enforcement of even a mediation agreement or arbitration agreement or whatever this agreement is, you know, failure to adhere to it is still just, you know, a breach of contract issue. It's not, it's not something we're, you know, we're going to be able terribly enforce, which is why it's important for us to stay on the path of the Laco petition process. And that's our, that's our ultimate statutorily, statutory framework that gets us to independence.
Yeah, look, I'm in favor of this. I think you've got to try. So I'm not, you know, I'm just sort of down the road saying, you know, there's got to be some buddy laying some groundwork to make sure we're all going to stay on track on this thing. Because I agree with your, you know, I, I mean, we're dealing with a party that has typically said one thing and gone in a different direction. So how you, how you do that, I don't know, but that's, you guys are smarter than me, so you'll figure that out.
The, the firm that they're using is really well versed in fact-finding and negotiation mediations between the warrant parties and the districts. I've used them many times. Most of the school districts in California use them. So they know how to not only find, get consensus between, you know, parties who are at war. They also know how to make sure that you have agreed to it and that it's binding. I've used them for my last fact-finding when I was a superintendent. So this company is really versed in doing that with warring parties.
From your lips to God's ear.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Any agreement we come to would also go back to the council for as well.
Paul? You're muted.
It would be appropriate to unmute and then call a question.
I agree. So do we need a motion?
Direct the city attorney to respond to the settlement offer to include the following provisions. Both parties agree to separation. Both parties agree to LA County Office of Education. And their consultants are well suited. Yep. Both parties agree in advance to be bound by financial terms. And both parties agree they will not engage in ex parte communications. That's just a quick love it. Yes.
I was just going to say the motion could be staff recommendation if you want.
I was just making sure we knew what was in it.
If, if, if there hasn't been a motion, maybe if I can make a motion, which is a little different than what it says there, which is I move that we ratify the letter that was sent. Full stop.
Yeah, Christine, is that the intent?
Um, yes, I mean, that's fine too. That's what's in the, the staff recommendation as well.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
I think it's all done already.
I think. Yeah, I think Paul seconded it maybe, somebody.
I started paying attention, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and a dog bark. Can we have roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Gristanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and hope to see you all at 6 o'clock. And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Will need to do a roll call on that?
How do we, Mikey did it first. We don't need a roll call. He was.
If Mayor Pearson adjourns the meeting, we don't need a roll call.
The mayor is a, the mayor, Mikey Pearson, is adjourned in the meeting?
I hope so. See you later. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, that was relatively simple.